This is actually a special meeting tonight, November 10th, 2014. We are honored to be joined by the Board of Selectmen, which will be joining us closer to the 7:30 hour. So we have a joint meeting tonight, but we're going to begin school committee only here at 7 o'clock. We have a teaching and learning highlight, a new program that Mrs. Spinelli's going to introduce us to with some visitors who are going to join us. And then at 7:30, we will be joined in joint meeting by the Board of Selectmen for a review and a discussion, first look at the fiscal year 2016 revenue forecast and budget, and then also a new idea, a joint maintenance budget approach between the municipal side of the town of Foxborough and the school side. So, an interesting and new night tonight, and I want to thank everyone for joining. We have two members of our committee who are absent tonight. One will be joining us, we think, in a little while, the other who's unavailable, but we do have a quorum, so we'll get underway. And it's nice to see everybody again. Second week in a row. As much as I like to see you, I'm glad we don't do this weekly. But we do have some good agenda items tonight. And I know I didn't mention this, but as always, I'll entertain any visitors that are here that would like to be recognized prior to our published agenda. We don't have any coming to the table. We do have four members of the Board of Selectmen here already. It's nice to see them and welcome. This is kind of your space as well as ours these days, isn't it?
Well, next time we'll invite you and we can sit up there.
Well, that's a deal. That's a deal. Okay. So, Mrs. Spinelli, should I turn it over to you?
Yes. So, I'm really excited to have Dr. Ron Gerhart. I hope I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
You have.
Okay. And Mr. Jared Craig here to speak to you a little bit more in depth than I can about Project Contemporary Competitiveness, or PCC as it is known, which is offered in partnership with Stonehill College. It originated in southeastern Massachusetts 47 years ago, and there are currently 24 member districts. So, Dr. Gerhart can certainly give us a little bit more background about how this started. But to update you to where we are currently, this summer I was invited to come to a meeting at Stonehill about PCC because they were thinking of extending the offer of membership to other districts other than those who have typically been members in the past. So, I was really interested. It is where I met Jared Craig, and he is the professional actor that's been here at the high school helping out with our drama and theater program.
Thank you.
So, we have sort of dual interests at the time, and he's a graduate of PCC, so he can speak to it as a student when he was in high school. But I think, just to give you a general introduction to people who are watching at home who don't have the memo in front of them that was quite detailed. PCC, or Project Contemporary Competitiveness, it really offers high school students, so incoming ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, the opportunity to go to Stonehill in the summer for an advanced studies program, six weeks duration, and they stay there and live there during the week and go home on weekends. And it offers so many different classes that are pretty exciting, and while we were there in the summer, PCC was ongoing, so you could see the activity that was happening for all of the students there. And basically, so what we're here tonight is to hear a little bit more about PCC, what the benefits are for our district. I am recommending that we join PCC as a member district, and there is a fee. It's a dollar per student in your district, so I want to be upfront about that. And there are some, there are many benefits to it that we can discuss after you have a better idea of the program. So I'm going to turn it over a little bit to Dr. Gerhart and to Jared to speak about the program and bring us up to speed.
Thank you, Superintendent Spinelli. I couldn't have done a better job myself with that summary. PCC was developed by school superintendents in 1968. It was a federal grant, and it was designed to provide opportunities at the time for gifted and talented students. This is the 48th year this coming summer, and it's an opportunity for us to formally extend an invitation to Foxborough to join the 24 school districts of PCC. It's primarily a leadership program for high-ability ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. And I'd like to deviate just a moment. I've been associated with the program for 30 years, 20 years as a school superintendent. The Board of Directors is made up of school superintendents, and I've been the executive director for 10 years. Two years ago, my wife and I were involved in a very serious head-on collision, and I woke up in a hospital with a marvelous nurse who asked me how I was feeling, and I said I was okay till I got hit by this car. And she said, "It's Dr. Gerhart, right?" And I, in a fog, I said, "Yes." And she said, "Well, I'm a PCC alumni, and we're going to take very good care of you." And they did. And then I had a friend of mine in association with this accident recommended an attorney. So I walked into the attorney's office. I had never met anyone there, and the woman came over and said, "Hello." She said, "I recognize your name. I'm a graduate of PCC. We'll take good care of you." Then I had to go to a chiropractor, and I'm on the table, and I'm being stretched and going through great pain, and the woman says, "What do you do?" And the chiropractor said to me, "What do you do?" I said, "I'm a director of PCC." And she said, "Oh, I went to PCC. I'll take good care of you." So there are three reasons why if you're in an accident, you need an attorney, and you have to go to a chiropractor, I suggest PCC. We offer 36 courses in the morning, and those 36 courses range from American Sign Language to architecture, to aviation, to China and America, to forensic science, marine science, psychology, sociology. We offer new courses every summer. We have 40 college students from across the country who provide supervision for all our students. The program is very, very, very well-supervised, and they are there 24 hours. They stay with the students from the time they come in Monday morning until they leave on Friday afternoon. We have 21,000 alumni at this point, over those years. We've had astronauts, Brian Duffy; we've had actresses, Eva Goddard; and we've had leaders in the Senate, the House. Everyone that has been associated with PCC has said it changed their life forever, and I truly believe at this point that it does. I wanted to also indicate to you that we have a formal agreement with Boston Wise. It's a group that's promoting a cultural relationship and friendship and understanding between the United States and China, and they've guaranteed us 15 students this summer. We had three last summer, and then we had over 40 that visited the program. And if you become a member of PCC, they're going to offer you an opportunity to have a sister school exchange program where your high school students could spend a week in China and then have an exchange with China students here. And I just met with Li Chen this morning for lunch, and he indicated that he would like me to offer that to you as another incentive to join PCC. Also, PCC and Stonehill, in my discussion with the Stonehill people, we will offer Foxborough a full scholarship. That would be $22.95. It's less than $400 a week. We'll offer you a full scholarship that you could use any way you like. You could use it for one student, or you could divide it up among as many students as you like. That would be your funding, and we'd like to offer that to you. The other incentive, if you will, the PCC program for the summer that you would be formally involved in begins June 28th, which is essentially the next fiscal year. So there would be no administrative cost, as Superintendent Spinelli has indicated, until the next fiscal year because we've already concluded this current summer. That's what I wanted to share with you. I know that you're on a limited time schedule, and we very, very much appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you, and Jared can give you a personal viewpoint of his experiences with PCC.
That would be great. Maybe, you know what, I forgot to do at the same time. I know Mrs. Abrams and Mrs. Myers-Peckler, the principals of Middle and High School. I asked them to be here so they could talk about what this, what opportunities to provide for our students that we, you know, that's different. So if you guys want to come up while Jared's doing his thing and have some input afterwards. So Jared?
Great. Thank you. I just want to thank everyone for taking the time to hear about this program that is very near and dear to my heart. Just to give you a little bit of background about who I am is I am the founding president of the newly-formed PCC Alumni Organization. My wife and I and a few of our friends started this at the beginning of this year, really because we're so excited about this program, and we want more students to hear about it. So we want to fund scholarships for kids who are having trouble financially, who can't afford to go. That's one of our main priorities, reaching out to parents and creating a strong alumni network. So one of the benefits is that Foxborough students would then become a part of this strong alumni network that Dr. Gerhart has alluded to in his many interactions in his life. I am a Foxborough resident. My wife and I moved here about a year ago before this was even in the works, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. I do have two children who, you know, a big consideration was the school system, and Foxborough is known academically as, has a great reputation, and we are very excited that our kids will be going, I guess, to this high school, which is fun to think about. And I'm actually currently, as Mrs. Spinelli said, directing a dollhouse down the hall with Mikel, and it opens next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, if anyone's available.
Good plot.
Yes, exactly. 7 o'clock on Thursday, Friday, and 2 o'clock on Saturday. Got to get the plug in.
Thursday and Friday.
And Saturday.
Saturday afternoon.
Thank you.
Yep. Saturday afternoon at 2:00. Shameless plug. I attended PCC for two years as a student back there. It was only open to incoming ninth graders and 10th graders, so I went both years that I could go. I worked there as a proctor, which is what we call the counselor types, college-age students. I worked there for eight years, and I've been a master teacher of the theater class there for the last two years, planning to go back this year. I credit PCC as being the thing that has had the single greatest impact on my life in a positive way, overwhelmingly positive. I feel like it allows PCC students to dream any dream that they want and get them closer to making that dream a reality. For me, I dreamed to be a professional actor, and I was well aware from my parents that's one of the most difficult paths to choose for a career, and I had people there telling me that I could do it and giving me the faith and confidence that I needed to pursue a pretty illustrious dream. And I went on to have a very competitive career. I had, I've been acting professionally for the last seven years. I'm going to do a play in France for the next two months, actually, and I went to an acting conservatory at BU, and I'm still continuing to pursue that career when it coincides with family life. So it is something that I've had a good deal of success with, and I do credit a lot of it to PCC. It really accelerated my path of personal self-discovery. The friends that I made at PCC accentuated the best parts of myself. It creates an atmosphere that allows good students to become great people, not just academically, but it broadens horizons in many different ways that we can talk more specifically about if you're interested. The program, I think, happens at the perfect time for students. For me, as an eighth grader, I was a little shy, pretty timid, and really overwhelmed by the prospect of going to a high school where there would be seniors who could drive, and, you know, I was finally become the oldest person in the school in eighth grade and was going back to being the youngest again. I wasn't sure what the dichotomy would be. And throughout those six weeks that first summer, I really knew that everything was going to be okay because we had these college-age proctors telling us we're good people, telling us that, you know, they believe in us. And that, to me, I just took everything that they were saying to heart and flourished in high school. After attending PCC, I decided to run for class president. I served as class president for two years. I served on the MFC board, as Mrs. Myers-Peckler might remember, and I also had a pretty successful theater career there. So student government and theater really became the cornerstone of my career and were things that were instilled in me at this program. Now, as a parent, it's incredibly important to me that my two kids grow up and go to this program. I'm sure that because of the ties that I have, that I'll be able to get them into this program when they're old enough to go. That's not really what I'm concerned about. Why I think I would like Foxborough to join for my personal reasons and for my students is the piece that I can't provide is what my wife and I experienced from being at district schools. I met my wife at PCC, by the way. We worked together. And I'm not being hyperbolic when I say that the fact that Foxborough was not a PCC school did factor into our decision of whether or not we want to move here because this program was so near and dear to our hearts, and one thing that we felt was important to the PCC experience is going back to the high school after these two summers. And then our friends, both of us were saying, her in Abington and me in Middleborough, we really used that as a springboard to support each other's goals, ideas, and dreams, and her friends all did it, my friends all did it, in two separate, in two separate schools, and it really launched us to the next level. So I'm confident that I could provide this program for my students, but I'm asking for the school committee's help in providing this whole experience with the community at large, and I hope that you guys will consider this very seriously. I think that the students who attend this program tend to have a tendency to flock together throughout their high school career because it's an intensely emotional bonding experience. I mean, if you can just imagine being in a room, not in a room, but, you know, putting a bunch of kids together with college kids who seem cool and exciting and have this life experience, and them telling you that you're a cool and exciting individual as an eighth or ninth grader, it's incredibly intoxicating. And so we found that those groups tend to sort of stick together and make lifelong friends. I actually spoke to my PCC roommate earlier today from ninth grade, and not because of this meeting, we were just emailing back and forth, and like, "I've got to bring this up tonight because it's just, it's just a great example of how these friends are lifelong." I met my wife at this program, the best man at my wedding went to this program, and even the person who officiated our wedding worked at this program with us. So it--
Did he take religion class at PCC?
No. It was not a religious ceremony.
Sorry.
My parents were not thrilled about, but--
He blessed you anyway.
Exactly. He did. So I think that that is just a testament to how strong this program is. And if I might talk about our alumni organization for just a minute, because I'm extremely proud of what we've done in just the short time that we've existed. So because of all of these reasons that I've given to you earlier, that my wife and I really wanted to give back to this program that changed our lives, so we decided to form the PCC Alumni Organization with a few of our friends. So it's in our first year, we've got tremendous amount of excitement from alumni. People are hearing about it through word of mouth because we haven't officially publicized it yet because we're trying to roll out a big campaign in January, and people are contacting us now, asking how they can get involved. So we know of at least eight alumni who are our age who live in Foxborough and are willing to write testimonials to any and all of you on behalf of this program. I didn't want to come on too strong and seem like we were, you know, trying to create a coup, so I have them on speed dial if you want. I could have them here in a matter of minutes.
I think it would fine.
I won't push it.
You have nearly every elected official in town in this room, so you better call them all in.
Perfect. They'll be here. Of course, I'm accounting my wife and I in that, but two of them are another couple that met working at this program, too. One of the goals of our organization is to create a strong alumni network, and ideally your students would be open to that. We see it being like a social networking group where if Mikel is looking at a certain college, and she can search the database and see that an alumni went there who's willing to be contacted, that she could then reach out and say, "Is this something that I could, I could be interested in? This is my focus," and that she would have this personal touch from someone who believes in this program and who now knows the type of student she is just based on the fact that she went to PCC. So we have many successful alumni who are willing to reach down and help those students up who are treading the same paths that they did. So I hope that you see the value in this program and have, I really hope that you have this district join PCC to create future alumni for Foxborough. So just to conclude, as a resident of Foxborough and a parent of future Foxborough School District children, I want to wholeheartedly urge Foxborough School Committee to join the 24-member districts that are already members of the Project Contemporary Competitiveness and to help those students who may need a little PCC in their lives. I just want to thank Mrs. Spinelli and the committee for hearing our request. Thank you very much.
Those are, those are great presentations. We can hear briefly from the principals, although I have a sense that there's not a lot of selling required, but go ahead, please.
Well, I just have to say that I wondered when Mark Crean was sending his daughter to PCC why we did not belong in terms of, you know, the experience that they have when we're looking at the opportunities to enrich their lives, the course offerings that they have, and the experience to become part of something that's different from Foxborough. It did change her life. She's in 11th grade now. She went two years ago, and she had the opportunity to go away from home for the first time. It was only 12 miles, but she developed some independence, some planning, and poised maturity and sophistication, as well as a group of friends that she connects with today, and she probably will continue to do that. So I think that in an enrichment sense, which is where we're looking for, and a personal sense for personal development, I think that it's something that I've seen through Mark's experience with his daughter as something that's quite positive in her life, very reasonably prized, and something that fits our ideals. So I'm really happy that we're here together talking about something that could be so enriching for our kids.
And I'd just say, did out to everything that everybody else has said. I was fortunate enough that when I was in Middleborough, Middleborough was a participating school district, so I know the impact that this program has on students, and I've also known Jared and many students from across the state for many years, more than I really want to count. And I can tell you that there are two things that always seem to bring a connection to many of them. One's their connection to student council if they're heavily involved there, and the other is the PCC part of it. So not only is it enrichment, which was mentioned about the classes, but the connections and the interconnections that the students make really across this entire state, and that those connections stay there. And the other offerings that are there as well, the keynote speakers that come in and the other social activities that also take place, just really allow this program to be kind of the full bouquet. And I see it really, truly as a win-win for our students. Another opportunity for them to be able to go after some dreams or to further pursue some things that maybe we have on a limited basis in our school, but here you could be focusing on for six weeks every day in that particular course or in that particular adventure that you'd like to try. So we're behind it.
Thank you, all four of you. That's a very compelling case. Questions?
I have a couple. So it's a dollar per student. So our out-of-pocket would be roughly $2,600?
Yes, because it doesn't include your preschool numbers. It's the number of K to 12 students, so it's somewhere in the 26.
$2,664.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. So if we decided to move forward with this, once we're in, can you change your mind about it? Are we, is it on a one-year basis, or is that going to be an annual expenditure?
I think it is on an annual basis. Is it? I don't know if anyone has dropped out, though, so much.
I'm assuming that we will have interest, but if we have no student interest, I'm just saying, I would assume that we would. It sounds very exciting, but I'm just curious. If we didn't have students that were partaking of this, I wouldn't want to spend--
There's just the one-year requirement that you have already paid for the next fiscal year. So you're essentially paying for the summer that you've already enjoyed.
Right. I understand. But if we did it for a year and we found that we only had a handful of students or none, then we wouldn't--
We'd have to reassess.
It was something that we could reassess.
Yes.
Yeah. And my other question is, what is the application process? Would it be open to all of our students? Would they have to be recommended by teachers? And I'm assuming the tuition would be paid by families.
It's definitely, it's a family choice. It's something that, I don't know if any of your kids are familiar with, I know my kids went to, like, College Gate, College Academy, which is a different organization, but it's for younger kids. So it's similar to that type of experience that offers enrichment challenges. Families choose if they would like or not. That certainly doesn't go through high school. This is definitely, I'd say it's that on steroids because, you know, I don't think it's an accident that the word competitive is in the, is in the title because I think this does give our kids a competitive advantage in terms of other students. And also, the global connection piece is very interesting to us at this time and place. So it is a family choice, and can all students apply to go?
All students can apply. The recommendation is good grades, good character, recommendation from the guidance counselor and two teachers.
Okay.
Ron, the related question I was going to ask is, is there a limit per district?
There's a quota per district. We haven't really been enforcing that quota over the past several years. So I would say for a school district your size, the quota's around 15 to 20 students, but we're flexible on that. If we were fortunate enough and you were too to exceed that number, I'd just hire more proctors and--
So you haven't had the experience of turning people away, it sounds like?
I have, not in the past year or two. So there's, there is room there, but normally it would be 15, 20 students.
All right. Tina, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that was, that answered that question.
And we were able in Middleborough to add some students beyond our quota in a couple of years there.
Knowing, for example, how our senior project has ramped, I can picture this potentially. I mean, everyone has summer conflicts and priorities, but I just want to know what our cap is. It sounds like there's not a cap, but we work together on space and--
Exactly.
Okay.
When we think about, you know, I know sometimes the cost is something that we're always looking at for families, and it is that full six-week program. You can't break that down. You go for that entire time. But when you divide out what the tuition is at $400 for room and board for those, for that time--
Less than $400 a week. Which is camp comparable to--
Yeah, $382 we had calculated it out. That's an incredibly--
Certainly comparable or cheaper than many summer camps, for example. I think also the age group, incoming ninth, 10th, 11th graders aren't driving yet, so they're not yet in the summer where they can go wherever they want on their own. So this might be a really good option for students who want to do something that speaks to their interest at that level.
And we do provide presentations and workshops if you would like, and some schools do, Middleborough does, have presentations during the school day, or if that's a problem with your schedule, we would come to evening meetings and with Jared and the community and those alumni that are already here, we can easily arrange that in order to provide an opportunity to get the publicity up.
I think an informational evening meeting for parents would be--
We'd be more than happy to do that.
Because it's really, it's not really the school day type of information. It really would be something that we can be needed for parents to come and find it a little bit more, especially since it does require boarding during the week. That's definitely a step up in terms of what some parents might be thinking of, so.
Can I just, hang on one second, Mikel. Can I just ask a question? So it is a boarding program?
Yeah.
It's not a day program?
No.
No, they stay. It's residential. They come in Monday morning, and they go home Friday afternoon, but they're there. We have them 24 hours.
Okay. Mikel, go ahead.
And we keep them busy.
I was just going to say that I think this is a great opportunity for the age group it's centered around. I remember my freshman, like, incoming freshman summer, I really didn't do anything all summer. And it's different for, like, 16-year-olds and, like, between 16 and 18 where you start working over the summer, saving money and, like, paying for gas, and you have plans to prepare for college, or I know, like, incoming, sometimes incoming seniors start applying for colleges, like, early action, early in the fall, and preparing the summer. But if you're an incoming freshman or sophomore where you really don't have much going on over the summer, you know, you might not, you might play a sport or two, or maybe, if you don't have anything going on and you hear about this program, I feel personally like I would jump on it if it's something that I can explore, something I wouldn't do in school, or something I might not do normally, and be able to be with the new group of people and learn a lot about being myself, being independent for six weeks in the summer. And it's honestly not that expensive. I know there's stuff I do at the high school right now that's more expensive for a less amount of time. I would totally, I would totally do it as a 15, 14, 15, 16-year-old. So I think it's a great opportunity for the students at Foxborough High School.
Other comments or questions from the committee? Yes?
Yeah, I agree with perfectly what Mikel said. It's like a great, it seems like a great opportunity to reach, like, step outside of that box, like, that box where you want to, like, maybe, like, get out of your comfort zone, meet new people, and make friendships that, like, last a lifetime, and that sounds like, and personally, like, I would hop on to this, like, this adventure, and I would take, and I'd go outside my box and, like, reach a class that I, like, I'd really want to go to, but, like, that don't provide here, and, like, I'd love to learn about. It seems like a great opportunity.
Bevy, any comments, thoughts?
No. Go for it.
So timing-wise, it looks like the deadline for receipt of applications is Friday, February 6th from the material, so this is something--
That was last year. Is this this year's?
I'm looking at the 2015 calendar.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
So--
Yep, sorry. This is the one you updated. I apologize.
If we were to move, if we, if we were to join, we'd need to get moving on the information night and the application, given that the holidays and the rest of it.
If I, if I might, we have a meeting of all PCC guidance counselors this Friday. If I might, we have a meeting of all PCC guidance counselors this Friday, and you would be more than welcome to send any of your guidance people. And at that time, we distribute the catalogs and the application forms. So we haven't started our own process yet.
Yep.
So you're perfectly right on target to come into the program.
And Debbie and Diana, your thought is we would start this in the summer? This coming summer? Okay. Well, I know I'm very... Yes, Joe?
Just wondering, so what time of the summer would this take, Claybad?
It's June to August, Joe.
There's an informational flyer underneath my memo, all right?
How much would it cost?
It's right in the memo.
So I'm very pleased with the presentation, and as always, with opportunity to expand our educational opportunities beyond the four walls of the school. So I want to applaud the superintendent and the staff for bringing this forward. I also personally like the relative low cost, and what makes me feel comfortable about adding an incremental cost to our budget personally is knowing that we're running under, have been, and that are our best projections while it's early in the school year that will continue to underrun our current budget, so...
You wouldn't see it in this year.
A good point.
So you will see it in the December budget we present for FY16.
Good point. So I know I'm comfortable.
It does sound like a program that would give us a lot of bang for our dollar-per-student fee.
Well, you're right. And the other thing I like, too, is I like how it expands our curriculum offerings for those students who are...
In the enrichment and challenge area.
Yeah, I mean, these are career and lifestyle choices, as Jared talked about. I think the more of those we can offer in today's educational environment, the better. And schools are only trending towards more and more of that, so...
We certainly don't offer aviation science here. And we do have kids that are interested in that.
Absolutely.
So there are so many of the classes that really stood out for me, so I was very happy to be invited this summer to come to find out information and to be invited to consider joining.
So would anyone like to make a motion at this point?
I would like to make a motion that we adopt this program.
I'll second the motion.
Effective for this coming summer?
Effective for this coming summer. And the deadline date of February 6th.
So that we would participate in the summer of 2015.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Tina. Any further discussion? We know there's none from over there. But I suspect they'd be joining us in our vote. All those in favor? Great. Congratulations, Ron, Jared. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Might I just add?
Thank you very much.
I did request the board to approve Foxborough pending approval of the school committee, and they have done that, so you're in.
Oh, great. Oh, thank you.
Well, that's a nice surprise.
Pending the approval of your school committee.
So you've done your legwork.
Yep, you're all set.
Well, we look forward to hearing about it, and maybe this time next year, getting a report out about how it's gone for the first summers.
Excellent. We'd be happy to do that. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And we'll get the information about the guidance counselor meetings, get that all straightened out. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Because we have interest.
Very good. It's a great program, low cost.
Thank you both.
All right. Could I invite our colleagues from the Board of Selectmen to the guest table?
Build it, college. Bye, guys.
Thank you for commenting, you guys.
Debbie.
Yes.
Build it, college.
It's my favorite. Yeah, it was great.
It's just a day program, though. Yes. Here they are.
Anywhere you want. Your choice, Randy.
You're going to be using this, correct? You're going to be projecting up there?
Yeah.
Steve's not here. He wants to sit in his spot.
Do you want a clicker? Do they slide?
Would you like to sit next to Bill? Oh, look. Oh, that's the field. That's fun. Look at him. Isn't that funny?
The way they might have just looked at each other.
They might have just looked at each other. Thanks, too. What am I saying? I don't want to be sandwiched in the bucket. It happened to me. He's got our colors.
That time of year.
So...
Once again, I didn't get the memo.
I just weren't touched.
Hey, Bill.
Debbie, can you pass me a water? I'll pass it around. This is, like, the most polished visitors' table I think we've had. Now, this is great.
So I want to welcome all five members of the Board of Selectmen, along with Mr. Keegan and Mr. Scollins, to the meeting. And I want to thank Chairperson Brew for working with me to schedule tonight's meeting, so thank you.
I just want to open up our meeting, Bruce.
I don't know the new assistant. Bill, maybe you could introduce us?
She wants to. I want to open up the meeting first. 7:30, call the meeting to order. Thank you. Go right ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I would like to introduce Mary Beth Minard, who is the new Assistant Town Manager. She's been on the job for five weeks now?
Yes, nearly five weeks.
About five weeks?
Nearly five weeks.
She comes from Westwood as the former HR Director for the past 11 years, and is currently serving as the co-chairman of the Mass Municipal Personnel Association, but also has a terrific background in management as well. So we are very pleased to have her aboard. And I couldn't help but think the other day, we were sitting around the table, and we had Debbie, we had Bill, we had Randy, we had Mary Beth, and I'm sitting there, and I said, wow, pretty good team. You know, and I'm sitting there looking around, and I said, that's a lot of resources at that table. So I'm really looking forward through the next several years of developing a pretty good program between both the town and school, budget-wise and program-wise. So we're actually pretty excited about it, so... So by way of introduction, that'll sort of kick off the discussions for tonight.
Did they open their meeting?
I think they did. So you're all settled, Ryan, opening your meeting?
Yes.
Thank you again, everybody, for coming tonight. And it's unusual, Bill. Normally, we're over in the Town Hall at your meeting, so it's nice of you guys to come to your home, I guess, your home away from home.
This is our secondary home. This is home away from home, I guess.
And as I talked about at the beginning of the evening, the purpose of the joint meeting is twofold. First, to review and discuss the outlook for fiscal year '16, revenue forecast and budget. Mr. Scollins, he always does a great job for us. Thank you, Randy, for being here. And then, an exciting possible new program around joint maintenance, so should I turn it over to you?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, members of the school committee, and members of Board of Selectmen. We'll start with what we typically do when we start off on our budget process, which I can't believe it's still, it's here again. Six months ago, we just finished it, and we're about to start the six-month process again. So we'll go with just a real brief review of the milestone calendar, the budget milestone calendar. So we're all on the same page. We've already had our joint leadership meeting that Bill just described. Here we are tonight to review the revenue forecast. This week, we'll meet with our department heads to review budget guidance and request that budgets begin to be developed and delivered back to us by December 12th. Then we'll distribute the consolidated documents, and I realize on the school side, it's a preliminary document, and it pretty much is at that point on the town side as well. We'll distribute those just before the holidays for holiday reading, and then we'll...
What a guide.
Right. Then we'll begin our traditional review with the advisory committee over the month of January. And this year, depending upon weather, the school committee's presentation is currently scheduled for the first Wednesday in February, February 4th, I believe. And prior to that, the school committee will have voted, you know, their recommended budget in the last Monday in January. And then we'll move forward into the, to a review with the Board of Selectmen as required by Town Bylaw. It's required that we meet and review a preliminary balanced budget with the board, their first meeting in February. So we will do that, as we always do. And then, by then, we will have completed all of our internal reviews and made any adjustments that we need to make. And then we'll have, go into the capital part of the budget process, and we'll meet, as we traditionally do, the first Saturday in March, have all the departments present their capital requests. It's a pretty efficient process. The CIP committee actually ranks, reviews, and votes their recommendation that day, so we can then present them back to the Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee, and of course, back to the school committee, as well, right after that. And then things pretty much finalize and settle out with revenue or any minor adjustments that we have to make in the month of March. And then we'll bring forward a final recommendation targeting the first week in April to the Board of Selectmen, so they can make their recommendations, advisory committee can make their final recommendations right after that, and then it's off to the races, to the printer, and on to town meeting May 11th, which is only six months away. So that's the milestone calendar. Any questions or comments on that? It's pretty much the same as it has been, just the dates change. Excellent. Briefly review the draft advisory committee budget review schedule. This is the traditional schedule, where we meet every Wednesday night in January, and the first Wednesday in February, starting with public safety, public works, culture and recreation, human services, general government, and then public schools. Although the idea's been floated this year that potentially we might take a page out of the capital process and hold meetings on a Saturday or two to make this process more efficient. That's still to be determined by the advisory committee, and obviously, they'd need to be buy-in, you know, from the school committee on that. And so we'll, if that changes, or if that's a scenario that the advisory committee would like to consider, we'll share back. But for the time being, this is the schedule as it traditionally is. Have to have a little budget humor as we start off the process, the six-month process, we have to have some humor. We are planning a bold new direction, but not by using bad math, but by solid planning over the last three budget cycles. And it does have to do with our surplus, but it's one we have been telling Mother about for the last three years, so... Let's jump right into it. This is the FY16 executive summary for the General Fund, operating revenue, and really just preliminary estimates on the expense side, because nobody has submitted any formal budget requests. What, the way I'll walk you through this is, what this is summarizing on the revenue side, the top four lines, it's summarizing about four dozen lines into four. Net taxation, net state aid, local receipts, other available funds. And in a minute, I'll just march through the high view on, you know, what's projected to change in terms of revenue from this year to next. Then below that, we have our fixed costs, which traditionally, here in Foxborough, we pay those bills first, so to speak. It's our insurances, our debt service, audit, sewer, assessments from Southeastern Regional, and then we're down to what's available for operating budgets for Foxborough Public Schools and municipal budgets. The high view of FY16 is, it's preliminary estimated to increase, the revenue is to increase about 2.7 million over FY15, and fixed costs are initially estimated to be about $750,000 higher next year, driven mostly by assumed health insurance and pension assessment increases, and I'll speak about those in a minute. So therefore, that is projected to leave us a net increase available for operating budgets of about 1.97 million. And the preliminary budget estimates indicate a balanced FY16 budget. Again, here we are at the beginning of the process, we haven't even, you know, begun to pull together all the requests and review and vet them, so we'll find out how good our preliminary estimates are. They've been pretty good in the past, but there's no, these are just, really just placeholders, so nobody should really put a lot of stock in them. This is not the school's number, and it's not the municipal number either.
Randy, excuse me. Do you and Bill prefer us to hold questions, or do you want us to just go along the way?
Along the way, it's fine.
So I, just as we get first glimpse of preliminary numbers...
Sure.
I know that the town is always appreciative of the Selectmen and the committee being sensitive and conservative to our, the way we budget with your guidance and Bill's guidance. Can you just comment on those percentages? Are these percentage increases in terms of revenue and fixed costs, are these, you know, ballpark? There's nothing crazy different here?
No, these are, these are pretty, pretty average. I'm a little unhappy with the fixed cost increase, because we've just gone through a cycle. It's projected to be a 5.4% increase. There's, you know, revenue projected to increase about 4.6%. Expenses are matched, you know, with that net-net with our preliminary estimates, so it's right in, you know, that's what you want. You need a, you need a match. It's the fixed cost that I'm a little unhappy about, but it's really, we've done so much in this space, and it's really driven by the fact that we've made so many changes, meaning policy decisions that the board has made, and the partnership that we've had with the school administration on new, you know, health insurance agreements, and I'll just call it for what it is, you know, some cost shifting. And we've had the benefit of that for the last three years, and we're at the end of that at this point. There's been a lot of change absorbed by employees and retirees at this point. That's not to say there isn't some more opportunities to come, but at this point, I think we've sort of bottomed out, not totally, and so I'm expecting that the health expense trend, a natural trend, you know, may start to kick in, and we may, instead of looking at flat insurance premiums, or declining, or modestly increasing, we may be looking at something like a 7.5% or something like that, which is an estimate. And any point that gets shaved off of that is worth about $60,000. So that's a big number. See up here, about $453,000 assumed increase for that. That's a, you know, for the town of Foxborough, that's a big number out of, you know, what's available. And then the other piece is pension that's driving that fixed cost percentage. I'm estimating about a $291,000 increase in the pension assessment, and that's from Norfolk County Pension, which covers about an equal amount of employees on the municipal side and on the school side. It's the non, you know, teachers retirement, you know, pensioners. The state, as you know, picks up the mass teachers retirement share, the town share for that. But the reason for the increase that I'm projecting here, it was a very substantial increase this past year. It was, I think, about $460,000, is that the Norfolk County Retirement Board is, continues to pursue a very aggressive funding schedule. And it's only, their current plan, and it may change, you know, in the near term, but they haven't released any new plans yet. The current plan is to continue to become even more aggressive. To put a fine point on that, this year, we are funding at, as is every other town that's participating, 19.7% of salary. So 19% of eligible salary, you know, for these group of pensioners that are associated with Norfolk County, either accruing their pensions or have their pensions, we're paying 19.7% of salary. And that's projected to go up to 20.7% next year, and peaking at 24.1% of salary in fiscal '19, where it starts to come down. So it's a very aggressive schedule by Norfolk County. In my personal opinion, and I'm just going to speak for myself, I think it's a little bit too aggressive, and I certainly would encourage policymakers to reach out to the board over at Norfolk County, and I'll just break it down to real simple terms. In 2000, just before 2008, or in fiscal 2007, Norfolk County and most of the state were on a funding schedule to be fully funded, because its pensions have been underfunded, be fully funded by the year 2026. And then the recession hit in 2008, and the Norfolk County Board decided to go against the legislative change that the state made to push the funding date out to 2040, based on a lot of, you know, rational thinking and thought processes that went into it. Actually, it's the actuary for Norfolk County, Mr. Dan Sherman, who was one of the thought leaders with the legislature and helped them architect that, to push it out to 2040. But rather than do that, Norfolk County actually pulled the funding schedule in four years, to 2022, which caused a big spike in our assessments, and everybody's assessment within Norfolk County, which is, tends to be, in my perspective, their pattern, to be a little bit too aggressive in the funding. So it's currently been brought back to 2031, but not where the state is at this point in time. So there's an opportunity to, you know, relax that a little bit. And again, that's a policy decision that they make. We really don't have any control over that. It's a five-member board, and I certainly would suggest any dialogue between our respective So it's currently been brought back to 2031, but not, not where the state is at this point in time. So there's an opportunity to, you know, relax that a little bit. And again, that's a, that's a policy decision that they make. We really don't have any control over that. It's a five-member board, and I certainly would suggest any dialogue between our respective board members here with them to be comfortable why we have to have that much pressure on us from the particular item. So other than that, all the ratios look about the same.
Randy, a quick question on healthcare. Are you beginning to get early quotes now that support that number or is that your worst-case estimate?
That's, that's a conservative estimate, but really a middle-of-the-road, realistic estimate. We won't get the, we're with MYA, as you know, which is a group of about 151 towns. And typically, they'll release their range of percentage of premium changes to the member communities, a range at the MMA meeting in January. And a range, not necessarily your percentage increase, but because we have a different cycle, we renew September 1 as opposed to July 1. You know, our number typically comes in a couple of months after that, but we still look for guide, at least we have a range that we know we're within at that point in time. And then we continue to work with our MYA rep to pull that number in as soon as we can. So that's one of those numbers that falls in between that February and March timeframe. As I said, every 1% there is worth about 60,000.
So what percent is that roughly?
This represents seven and a half percent, which we've been enjoying zeros or relatively close to zeros because of all the changes that we've made and that, and that the board has supported as well. So it's a, it's a more traditional increase. We've had double-digit increases prior to starting on this plan to, you know, attack the rising costs of health insurance.
But you'll see that number March timeframe?
March, I'm hoping at the latest, but I'm sure with Bill's help, we'll try to reel that in a little faster.
Try and push to get that number earlier. It is encouraging to see, we just, we met with the MYA officials this past, two weeks ago, and the trend was actually in a good direction. So it may not, that number may be aggressive at this point, that's at seven and a half percent, but.
So you think that might be high?
The seven and a half percent might be on the high side.
Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, it's trending in the right direction, so we'll see where it goes. We'll know, have better information. Typically, in any of the healthcare, folks don't like to release numbers from us until January, February. So we'll, we'll look to try and get that information as soon as we can.
Bill, do they provide any different plan options to consider?
We're looking at a retiree, a new retiree plan, which is less costly for next year, which could impact the budget significantly.
And I've been putting a little pressure on them relative to the prescription program, looking at the Canadian program, which should drive the cost down, which they, MYA seems to be against, but I'm going to push them hard on that issue because I think, I've seen it work in other programs. I'm not sure why we're being so stubborn about it. There we go.
There definitely, as you just heard, there are some other areas to make some progress on, probably not as big as the areas we've made in the past, but there's still areas and, you know, we'll continue to press on those.
Thank you.
I would add one comment to Randy's thing and, correct me if I'm wrong, but last year you said the pension thing went up by almost 400,000?
Over 400.
Over 400. So I would actually encourage the two boards to ask the Norfolk County to come in and talk to us because if you think about that from a two-year perspective here, we just put on the table almost $800,000 of increased pension costs.
Recurring.
Recurring. And if they, if we don't get them to ease off on it like the state has, this is going to chew us up worse than even potentially health insurance has.
Exactly.
Going through the process. So I think they really need to come in and defend the stance they're taking and there's really no harm or foul if they push this, the schedule out a little bit to make it so that other communities, I can't believe we'd be the only ones thinking about this, but I really think that's, that's the bigger question here and they, and there's control over that, so.
Do we have a position as to what would be the comfort spot? Would it be 2035?
I mean, I think mirroring the state is, you know, is a reasonable position. And I'm not aware that they've toggled that back.
But even if you think about it, even a couple of years, it'd be significantly, I mean, it could mean almost a no increase next year if they toggle it back.
They always have to increase. That's, that's part of their, part of this legislation allowed for pushing out your schedule until 2040, but it did not allow you to have a reduction in the funding of the pension. But certainly it could slow the growth.
So just to capture on Bill's suggestion, Lorraine, would it make sense perhaps for you to reach out and then for us to come to one of your meetings? Invite them to one? Would that be?
Set that up. We'll set that up.
Great. Thank you.
Lorraine, excuse me, on the flip side though, the sooner you pay it off, so we got to look at what the effect is 20 years, 30 years down. If we're taking a quick hit and putting it back, what's that going to do on the tail end? So I'd be interested in seeing that as well.
Exactly. And that's the, that's the balancing act, which, you know, certainly I don't think this group here is kick the can down the road kind of group. Certainly our, what we've been doing with OPEB is not that. However, with the extreme shifts that happened in the market have accelerated, so therefore increased dramatically pension, the pension assessment going back five years ago and still at that run rate and then higher than the state for the last several years. At a minimum, it requires some explanation as to why we need to be as aggressive. But I agree, we shouldn't be kicking the can down the road either.
Thank you.
Thank you. With just a note here, FY13, 14, and 15 have, we've had a balanced budget those, the last three years with 400 to 500,000 that had been identified as available for operating budgets that we did not use for the operating budgets. However, we did use them for one-time expenses, like the capital budget, putting into stabilization and things like that. And one of the goals that we had been working on in doing that was to try to create some room within the operating budget to fund the town hall project without a debt exclusion to squeeze that debt service into the operating budget without it being such a tight fit. So that was one of the motivations to try to create that room. That room is still there and as we get down to local receipts, I'll explain where we're looking to create it again and then how that impacts what's happening in expenses. On the, on the revenue side, just briefly, if I would like to hear the high-level, you know, bullet points on what's driving the increase. On the net taxation, 964,000 is coming from the levy limit, increasing by two and a half percent. 535,000 is an estimated new growth taxes. This is an estimate that I work on with the building commissioner and the chief assessor. They're the ones who are closest to the activity in town and the timing of things. Some of it's, you know, art and science because you never know when the permit's going, you know, going to get pulled or the occupancy's going to get, permit's finally going to be given, the growth captured, but they have an incredible track record. Just this past year, we were looking for, I think it was 802,000 in growth, which is a big number for us in fiscal 15, and it turned out it's 838,000 preliminarily certified, to be final certified this month. So, and they've done really well with the big numbers as well in the past when we've had big development. So they've got a good track record, so I have confidence in that and actually happier that it's, it looks like a, maybe a better target for us to hit this year. But we will see it going the other direction for the following years. The snow and ice deficit, you know, reduction, 122,000, that's just, we, every year, we assume our budget, which is about 213,000, and then we assume a $250,000 deficit. And so last year, we spent 372,000. So again, I'm going in with 250 and we'll see what the weather brings and we'll adjust, there'll be adjusting items as we go. And then excluded debt tax, which does come through taxation, is dropping off, it's dropping off 62,000 as we amortize some debt. So that equates to just over a million and a half in estimated growth in net taxation. On the state aid at this point in time, I'm assuming in essence relatively flat state aid. However, you know, I have a detailed breakout in that other document that you have, which I won't be going over, but you do have as a reference where I break it out by line. And we'll adjust this when the new governor releases their budget proposal and they actually get an extra couple of weeks, the new governor, so we probably won't see this number until early, mid-February, not late January like we, like we usually do. So that'll mean an adjustment we make there and hopefully that will, you know, give us some, some upside. Really no indication at this point, given that it's an administration. Local receipts, here's a, here's a really good story where I'm proposing that we increase our use of local receipts by about 654,000 while still targeting an increased free cash recharge of 1,950,000. What does that mean? So as I think most of you know, have been involved in the budget process, know that, you know, we don't budget, the town doesn't budget all of its local receipts every year. It budgets in such a way in order to regenerate free cash. So we look for local receipts to come in higher than what we budget. So we don't spend every penny because we actually need that recharge in the next year to fund the operating budget and the capital budget. We typically rely on about $2 million of free cash every year, which we've generated in the prior year. Good news is right now, we're sitting, we just had our free cash certified at just under 5.2 million, so which means we rolled forward 3.2 million and we generated the 2 million. Would have been another 2.3, but the state was a late payer on some things and so they won't give us credit for things that, where we have a deficit in the account waiting for the state. It's like 300,000, so it would have been even higher. So, so where we typically target a recharge or an under-budgeting, if you will, of local receipts by a million and a half, and 500,000 comes in from other areas, underspend on budgets, balance sheet changes, et cetera. This is, this is the area to create the cushion in FY16 in order to begin to pay the debt service, assumed debt service included in town hall in FY17 and 18. So what I've done is I'm recommending we target a recharge of 1,950,000 so to preserve 450,000, but it still results in a significant increase in the use of local receipts, about 8.7% based on current estimates. And that's being driven by a few things. And actually very fortunate, we have some very positive trends in local receipts in four major areas. Motor vehicle excise tax has been on a five-year climb. It's been sustained. I'm assuming modest growth, you know, 1% because, you know, sometimes these things go up and down a little bit, but it's about 60 line items within local receipt, so you can't hit each one. But, you know, between the, sorry to use an old expression, jigs in the reels, you know, we usually, we hit the, we hit the bottom line. So motor vehicle excise tax, the hotel motel excise tax has been increasing nicely for us as well. Again, on an upward trend for the last five years. As you know, we increased that back several years ago. The meals tax has also continued on an upward trend, not rising as fast, but it's already in a, you know, a new, big new number, you know, relatively new number for us, you know, between 800 and 900,000. As you know, that's dedicated to funding the OPEB liability and to roads. And then building permits. The economic activity in the town, you know, has picked up again. We've come off a drought there and we're now, you know, seeing a nice uptick there. So between all of these, all of these areas and sustainability and all of the other 55 lines, you know, this is a, is a very, what I consider reasonable projection, especially given the recharge number of 1,950 that I'm recommending. On the other available funds, just a couple of moving parts here. One, this is where we input our free cash use. And so I'm recommending that we toggle up by about 287,000 to a 1.2 million dollar level in free cash. Last year, it was 287, or this year, 287,000 less than that. But again, we had about 100,000 in unsettled contracts, so it's a little distorted, so it's really only about 187,000 dollar increase. You know, these are one of the areas where you can move up and down over the years to balance the budget. To put it in perspective, when times are tough, we might put 2 million of free cash into the operating budget and then as times improve, you know, we'll toggle it back and try to get it back to about a million, which is about where we were. So we're still in very good shape there. 200,000 dollar increase in ambulance receipts towards the operating budget. This program run by the fire department is an incredible success story. I think we've talked about this before. They're really self-funding everything. They're self-funding all their capital equipment and an increasing contribution towards their, towards their operating budget as well. Because as you know, the EMS services they provide is, I believe, the majority of the services they provide, so it's highly appropriate to pump this right back into that, that budget. There'll be a reduction, assumed reduction to enterprise overhead allocation. This is a number of about roughly 600,000 to water and sewer enterprise for overhead costs. The reduction is associated with an article that's going forward next week for the DPW administrative offices, and this is a way for the town to fund its share, because the highway department will be in there, which is general fund budget, not water or sewer, to fund its share over five years at an estimated 223,000, I think. And this year, we have already budgeted 64, assuming it goes through, and next year's share will be 53. It's on a declining schedule. So that's factored in, the payment of the town share for that. And then next year, we'll start our annual triennial reassessment of all property, a revaluation of all property, and that costs about 120,000 dollars to get that done. And we take the funds to do that out of overlay surplus, you know, so any money that we put aside, you know, for exemptions and abatements that are left over in that account, we bring them forward for one-time expenses like this. It's directly related or if there's even more, sometime we put it into the capital process as well. And then I'm not assuming that there'll be 20,000 dollars in private funding for the library Sunday hours, a trial that they're doing this year, that Beyond Books Capital Fund generously funded the Sunday hours program this year privately, and that's because it was a trial and the commitment was in the trial year, it would be on them, but if it succeeded, you know, it would be back into the budget. So that's the other change. And we already, we already talked about the, the major changes in fixed costs. And another piece there, a good news piece there is that there's 152,000 all decrease in debt service costs, 62 in excluded debt and 90,000 in included debt. So you can see where we've been creating room in the included debt line. The included debt line has been about 400,000 dollars higher if you go back a few years. And so that's, that's in essence the summary of, you know, how I, how we get to what I believe is going to be a balanced, should be a balanced budget for FY16, again, depending upon the requests and the decisions, the recommendations that are made here. Just to look forward briefly here, I'm not going to cover everything on this page, but the larger document, the other document that I've given you, about 19 pages, which is the four-year forecast of revenue and expense, what I've done is I've, I've pulled up the summary for 15, 16, 17, and 18, expenses on the top, revenue on the bottom. And in summary, FY15 and 16 reflects balanced budgets. The forecast for fiscal 17 and 18, I can't believe we were talking about that, include assumed included debt again for the town hall, and that's projected to add an estimated 568,000 and 556,000 in debt service respectively. So I, and as you can see, the deficits here, these are projected deficits. Naturally, we won't go to town meeting with a, with a projected deficit, but this is where, where it looks at this point, 141,000 in 17, 465,000 in 18. I believe those are manageable numbers because there are many moving parts. Certainly, at the end of the day, this group around this table has the, has the authority to, you know, to ensure that we wind up with a, with a balanced budget. So that doesn't, I'm not concerned about that because there are areas for upsides and to balance off, you know, any downside. So I, I think we're, you know, we are capable of pulling this off, but it will, it will put some, a little bit downward pressure on operating budgets in FY18, all things being equal. You know, there are other revenue opportunities out there that, you know, haven't been factored into this, some major developments that may happen that are not part of this plan yet because they're just too far off.
If I could just add, Randy, too, that there is, that seems to be the peak in terms of that debt service payment in 18, and then it starts to toggle back a little bit after that. So the goal being, of course, in that we've represented to folks that our goal is to try and build the new town hall within the existing budget and not, and not result in a, that exclusion of Foxborough. And so we're trying to plan for that and when you, when you can plan for it, you can, you can build that. You can build around that. So I've experienced doing this before and Randy has certainly done that as well. So we're very cognizant of what that all means and how we can make it work, but I think as Randy pointed out earlier, that this is certainly a manageable issue that I think we can work with.
And again, you have to take this in context, as I think this group knows, I'm typically not aggressive with the revenue forecasts. And so I, you know, I, that would be, that would not be the right approach here. We need to set this up for success and that's usually the way, the way it comes in, but we need to see some things happen before we can move some of these revenue estimates up. Like let's see the governor's new budget for, you know, for next year and see if we're on a different trajectory and see some other major new development come into town and add that in. Let's see the solar project come to fruition and, you know, drop a big number out of our operating expenses. So there are opportunities, so I certainly. So, there are opportunities, so I certainly think within the realm of possibility.
Right.
And this is a moving target, it's a snapshot in time, and, you know, it will change as the budget process unfolds. And the last item I was going to cover, again, just at a high level, is obviously, we have the operating budgets and we have capital budgets. So, what I've just done here is I've lifted and summarized at a high level of three pages of our latest five-year capital plan, and put it into major categories, and laid that out as well for the next four years, including this year, so you can see, you know, the relative amounts of the dollars, and the fact that, at this point in time, you know, based on the balances that we're carrying in free cash, everything, all things being equal, seems to be supported. And, you know, that's, I'm not necessarily advocating here for the, that level of use of free cash for all of these capital needs, the CIP committee does a great job at reviewing what's, what's a critical priority, what's an important priority, and what could be deferred, you know, especially in the next two years, it'll be important probably not to, you know, eed in as deeply into our free cash reserves, as I'm showing here, a million nine, a million eight, because the better free cash, the reserve number that we have on the balance sheet, probably the better we'll do in the bond markets with our next, with our next offering. But, we certainly have the resources on the capital side to, you know, to, to address, on paper, everything that's been identified today, and of course, that's a moving target, too, that changes, and is reprioritized annually. And I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't state here, what's included in the major building renovation line is obviously the assumed amount of funding for the town hall project, the other amounts in there assume the estimated MSBA numbers for the feasibility studies, and the assumption here is that, you know, when the next one of those projects goes forward, and, you know, we anticipate it will at some point, that, that wouldn't have a dampening effect on, on the outlook, because the assumption would be is that that would be an excluded debt project, just like all the school building projects have been, so it would have its own dedicated funding source. I don't think we could put two building projects within the levy limit, doing this one here is, I think, a first for the town, I don't think we've ever done that, but, you know, we're trying to be sensitive to the, to the taxpayers here and not layer on yet another one after we've just done three.
It's not, it's not a call for, I mean, the Igo School, a little over a million dollars of that was done within the budget process, too, so it has happened in the past.
Right, because of a technicality, right?
Right.
Right, yeah, it did, it did happen, yeah, a piece of it, if you can fit a piece in, yeah.
Well, I appreciate, and I'm not surprised, but I appreciate that you include some idea of the Burl and the Taylor down the road, we don't know when, we don't, we haven't talked at this table, you know, recently, about any pending immediacy to those projects, and yet we know they're out there at some point, so I appreciate that you've got them, you know, in the thought process, so no one's surprised when we get to that point, so.
We know, we know it's coming, it's just a matter of when.
Right. Well, we, we plan, we like to plan for those things, I mean, I can tell you just from the conversations we've had, just, just to this point, that we need to make sure that we all keep those things in mind, because, you know, in order for us to, to build for today, we also have to build for tomorrow, so, and that's, that's the conversation that has to have all the time, we have to have all the time.
Thank you. Great, thank you. So, that said, everything else is really supporting schedules, the rest of this presentation, and the other, the other document with the multi-year forecast, and if anybody has any questions at any point in time later, I'm happy to, happy to field them.
So, Randy, I guess as we go through, say, December, January, February, well, you'll actually, you'll have the budgets from all department heads before the end of December.
Right, next month.
And at that point, you can see if there's any request for program changes, or program expansions, or increase in services, right now, we don't know that.
Right, other than, I think, you know, the, well, we're going to talk about one in a minute.
Yeah.
Other than, than that, which is a, has a modest impact, of course, everything on the municipal side be reviewed by, by Bill and Mary Beth, and screened there first before...
But those items are still evolving.
Yes, that's right, that's right, yeah, there is, there is, there's some issues in the public safety area that we're looking at, that we think will actually improve services, and it will also be, and, and some other personnel-related issues that we're looking at as well, and of course, the, the central facility maintenance program that we're interested in as well.
Super.
And there's one expansion of service that you're all aware of, which is the additional police officer, which is 100 percent funded, you know, by the craft organization, so that, that has no impact on our ability to fund the budget.
So, has there been direction given already to the department heads?
No, we figured we'd have that conversation here and carry the, carry the water.
You know, we're, we're planning to have a conversation on Thursday of this week, with the department heads for the time of process.
Based on what I'm, what I'm seeing here, I mean, my suggestion would be, start out with a level services, because it looks like we certainly could start there, and anything that the, that the school administration and the town administration, you know, want to bring forward, that they think is a priority, obviously, you know, we're going to be able to talk about that, digest it, figure out how to fit it in.
Randy, over the past, I don't know how many years, we've always done the level service, and then the budget adjusts to it. Have you ever done an analysis of what it would mean to have level budget? And obviously, the number is easy, because it stays the same, but what services that we could look at, that you would cut to make it level budget?
I mean, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be for me to say, I mean, those are policy decisions, that would be between town manager and your board, and the superintendent, and the school committee, but you can see what the number is that would be talking about here, if we're looking to expand the total expense side, including, quote, fixed costs, you know, we're looking at 2.7 million or, you know, 4.6 percent, so I think I've heard it said before by a former manager, that we can deliver any number that the policy boards desire, you know, meaning a lower number, but there are, there are choices ultimately that will be made with regards to, to service. So, I think for us, 2.7 million, you know, I don't, I'm hoping that number's going to be, the, the expense side of that is going to be lower, but the...
So, you're saying to get to level, level budget, 2.7 would have to be cut out of services?
Absolutely, yeah. So, it's, you know, it would be a significant charge, like a half million just on the municipal side?
Yeah.
I'm not saying it wouldn't be on the school side either.
Oh.
But Jimmy, so are you saying it's an exercise?
It'd be more than that.
Testing out?
Well, I think it's, it's worth a dialogue, yeah, I look back a few years ago, and it's disappeared off of, and I don't know if it was ever on the projected milestone calendar, but at one point, the selectmen had met with the advisory committee, and we talked about that, it was an open forum, you know, maybe a couple handful of people, it was on a Saturday, you know, a, a nice discussion with the school committee, because I know you have your thoughts on it, the selectmen, the advisory, the finance committee, and maybe the CIP committee, because some of the things we're hearing, you know, bringing in capital improvement, thought process into one place for all of the town offices, you know, recreation, police, fire, school committee, but yeah, if you look at the CIP, the five-year projection, that wasn't on there before, okay, at some level, if you look at what's on the CIP thought process in the past, it's heavy on school, fire, police, but not so much in the town, so if we put that on there, all these little moving pieces, it'd be nice to have a dialogue, rather than, and we may end up at the same place, that says level service.
Actually, if you, if you look at page eight here, the other municipal-related, meaning not fire, not roads, not buildings, the municipal side actually outstrips the, the school side pretty dramatically.
Is it, is this the same five-year forecast that's on the website?
Yes, I've lumped, I've lumped this, these together.
Okay, because the...
It's quite significant.
Yeah, and again, this is, these are, you know, these are items that are placeholders on the, on the capital plan, again, the CIP committee meets and reviews and prioritizes every year, so it's a moving target, but I think that the school number has been relatively stable, and it's, it's really the building costs that ultimately drive the big fluctuations, you know, the, all the major buildings that we've done and will have to do.
And I'm not challenging the, the numbers, or I think if I had to vote, it would probably come down to level service, because I think, different discussion, but I think for many reasons, but just to dismiss the discussion of what would it take to have level budget, and I know it could be, you know, substantial cuts, but I don't want to be just so dismissive that we don't have that dialogue, I, I think there's a benefit to having the advisory, the finance committee weigh in on it, the school committee, so collectively, we have some strength in the direction, rather than saying, this is what we've done in, and I'm pointing to you, and I know you don't make the policy, but I think to this board and the school committee, do people have that ambition to have that dialogue?
If I can just, just add to that, I've actually done that in other jurisdictions that I've been serving in, and it just, it, it's, the number's actually relatively easy, it's how do you get to the number is the real, is the real challenge, and I, and I think that's where you could spend days and weeks talking about that, what that means, but it's good to have the conversation of what the number is, so people understand what it means, and then, because it does make it easier for people to understand the impacts of the budget, when they know what, what, where those numbers fit in.
Yeah, I, my perspective is it, it really comes down to the policymakers, the two boards, you know, sitting around this table, and I know there's some other policymaking boards that are, you know, not, not represented here, like, say, the library trustees, or, you know, planning board, but it's, from my perspective, it's these two boards who recommend service levels, and if that's something, you know, if, if service levels that these two boards want to recommend is dramatically lower than what we have here, then that, that's a conversation, you know, for these boards to have. And, you know, my two cents about the advisory committee is that, that they're, they're making a vote on what, what the policymakers are recommending, so I don't know that I would include them at that stage of policymaking.
As I understand the question, it's just, it's just to have a dialogue, because it's to know what the number means, because, because if you don't know what the number is, you can't have, you can't understand, you know, when, when the conversation comes, well, we're raising taxes because there's a 2.7 million dollar difference, to know what that number is, and that's why we're raising the two and a half percent taxes each year, and that represents the following issues, that if we didn't have that, this is what would happen. So, it's, it's much easier for the community to understand that, when we do have that conversation.
Well, the, the community, and quite honestly, myself, too, because when we have a, what's our budget this year?
Sure.
And the final number?
Roughly 60.
60 million, so 2.7 out of 60, doesn't sound so bad, 2.7 by itself sounds, where, where the heck are we going to find that money?
Well, then, when you start to, start to break it down, I mean, the reality is, is that the vast majority, the overwhelming majority of the projected increase in spend is contractual, you know, contractual salaries. So, because of that, and the natural increases and other, other expenses, I believe to, to have that theoretical discussion, you are talking about service cuts and, you know, cutting back in certain areas, not saying that's right or wrong, I'm just, I think that's the practical reality of it.
I think back, Randy, wasn't it like in 2001, where there, there was that huge drop in local funding that...
2003, 2004, yeah.
2003, yeah, and then you, we actually ended up having to cut like, I think, 25 positions.
Yeah, there was several positions cut on the school side, on the municipal side, and it, it took several years to, you know, to go back to that, I don't, I don't think the policy boards were thrilled about reducing services, but, you know, that's certainly a discussion that can be had.
I think that the school committee has always filled their budget based on their needs and the services that, that we need to provide to our students in the community, and I think that we have always been very mindful of what that cost is, we definitely look at those numbers, we're also looking at what we need to yield the same results that we do from year to year, and the reality being, as you said, Randy, contractual agreements, I'm looking very seeing increase in health insurance, which of course is a contractual agreement as well, but, so, I mean, that's, that's kind of, I think, I don't want to speak for the committee, but I think that that's kind of definitely been our perspective, that we're kind of, we're juggling both at the same time, you know, we're jug, we're juggling what the cost is, as well as what is the, what is the level service that we need to provide for our students to have a successful budget and services to our students.
And if I, and if I could add, and I think it's, it is a good exercise to do once in a while, but having done budgets most of my life, the reality is, of a 60 million dollar budget, about 23 million dollars of that is fixed, it's either expenses, I mean, heating the buildings, you know, the health insurances and stuff, health insurance would be one of the few things that could fluctuate minor, when you reduce staffing, obviously, you'll reduce health insurances to a small degree, OPEB will stay where OPEB is.
Debt services.
Debt service, pension will all stay where they are, so the only, the only outcome that would ever be in that exercise is the number of staff that you're going to cut to drop back down.
Because 60 percent of the, the total dollars is actually salary.
Okay, and I'm not disagreeing, but I've also been doing budgets on the private side, and if I had that mentality on the private side, we'd be out of business, so it, I'm not, we're not going back and being confrontational.
It's a healthy discussion.
I, I like your, I like your...
There's got to be some type of a dialogue, rather than saying, well, it's, it's all contractual, if it was contractual three or four years ago, we wouldn't have adjusted the health insurance that we did, we wouldn't have taken the money and put it, because it's never been done before, not, so you see where I'm getting at.
Absolutely, so every one of these contractual obligations is, everyone is an important decision when, when they all get voted on.
Jim, I, just personally, I think you ask a question that has to be asked, and should be asked every year, personally. I think Katie's right, though, I think the approach that we have, and the feedback we get, is that people are, are pleased with the balance right now, but I think we wouldn't be doing our jobs as either board if we didn't ask the question, so I, I mean, I think the last 20-minute discussion is valuable. Personally, I wouldn't want to see us put a lot of time into exploring both options, because I think that'd be a fair amount of, of unnecessary time that isn't likely, in light of what Randy's presented as an outlook, but does it merit potentially some further thought? I, I mean, I think you raise a question that's, that's a responsible question, so. Debbie, I know you wanted to make a comment.
I'll make a general one. I think any superintendent would be willing to have the discussion about level service versus level budget, if the reasons economically are compelling, and there's a problem to be solved in the town, and I'm, I'm just not hearing that right now. So, I mean, I think Randy does a really good job, in my experience, having been here the last seven years and participating in the budget forecasts that the town side does in particular, he always forecasts conservatively, and it makes it easy for us to live within that, because we know it's a conservative estimate, so we know we're going to be in the ballpark without getting into too much trouble, and it hasn't gone wrong yet, so I think that, that, I don't hear a compelling reason for not going forward with a level service budget and providing what we already do, but given that we are conservative, we do look at every line item and really try to decide if we need that or not, and we have been known to not increase some line items if we feel we can make do in some areas, so I'm not hearing the compelling reason for us deciding to put that forward, but I think the point is that it is a board decision, if there's something that you wanted to engage in that, it would be fine.
Yeah, and I'm, if I was sitting in your position, representing the school and the students, I would absolutely say the same thing. From my position, taking a perspective, looking at that, plus the rest of the town, looking at the taxes, looking at the services for the whole town, could we do without some other stuff, irrespective of the school and, and what your purview is, maybe we could, you know, maybe, you know, we looked at the DPW merging, I thought that was successful, we saved a lot of money, but we wouldn't have done that unless someone said, let's try something different, so, you know, I, I think, okay.
So, I was just going to add, Jim, I know, I think we've had this conversation a couple of years ago, I, I think one of the ingredients, at least, that we're discussing here, that is ultimately going to have the same sort of effect, is by attempting to put all of the debt service for the town hall within the levy limit, I mean, that is going to put pressure, downward pressure on spending, spending expansion.
Absolutely, absolutely, because you're taking it into the operating world.
By absorbing that, you know, in essence, what we're not doing is saying, oh, that gets, that sits above, and the taxpayers pick that up, and then there's, you know, 550,000 dollars of operating capacity in there to, to expand services, we're suggesting the exact opposite.
That's the downward pressure.
And it's going, so that will be, that will be some, I think, I think a manageable pressure, but it definitely will be a pressure that we will be putting, you know, on ourselves, and we have been doing it, as I said, over the last three years. years, uh, we've had between 400 and 500,000, which we normally would have committed to the process for operating, but we didn't, in trying to engineer this. And then this, we're, I'm recommending doing the same thing here by raising the target for free cash recharge out of local receipts by 450,000, right there. So there is downward pressure being, being brought to there, and I think our free cash balance reflects that as well, our reserves are, you know, back at, um, you know, close to all-time highs again.
I, I think, if I could just follow up, uh, from our meeting last week, that the, the payment plan, if you will, for the town hall already puts a similar type of pressure on the school budget than what you're talking, from what you're talking about. And we're on board with that, we've had lots of conversations about it, we certainly, you know, are, have a cooperative relationship with the town side, and I think we've accepted that downward pressure for the general good of the town, but it's already asking something on the school side that, um, is, is very similar to what you're suggesting the discussion be, and I, I just want you to know, we already know that, and we're already on board with that. So just want to make sure people understand that that's already a pressure on the school budget.
So Jim made a comment about the DPW innovation, should we use that as a segue to maybe talk about joint maintenance?
Perfect.
Thank you, Randy, for the overview. So I don't know who to give credit to for, uh, the birth of this idea, but I know I've heard a little bit about it, this is Joint Maintenance Budget Approach, between the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee.
We'll turn it over to Mr. Bill Yucna.
Yeah, well, it's, it actually, it's a, it's a, it's a, um, it's a plan that, that Bill Yucna has, has formulated for this community, but it's a plan that I've worked on personally with other communities, as well as Mary Beth, in her experience as well, so, um, we know it works, and we think that we can make it work here. And, uh, Bill has, um, has really looked, and Debbie as well, you should take some credit for this as well, and Randy for working on this up until now, this is going to more or less put this, put a formal, um, wraparound on this entire process. But I think it really, it makes a whole lot of sense, uh, in a set, and from, from my perspective as a manager, because every place that you go, every community that you go, the one thing that's missing from, from cities and towns is central maintenance, and it's, it's, it's the biggest expense that we have, other than our employees, is that we, and we don't maintain it, and we don't take care of it. And so it's a mistake, I think, I think the taxpayers see that, I think the, the residents of every community wants to see it, because they do it to their own homes. We should, we should take care of our buildings like we take care of our own homes. And I think that, um, this is a method towards, towards addressing that, and it become, it becomes less fractured, because we all, it's ultimately our one community to, to begin with, and this becomes a more, a more unified approach towards addressing something that's been long, long overdue. So with that, Bill.
Yeah, and it is, as a little bit of a background check on this, just so you realize this is obviously not something we're just dreaming up right now, trying to figure out how to put in place. Uh, for about the last year, um, I've been using the operations manager for the school department, as well as some of the maintenance staff, uh, to work within a number of the town facilities. They have been, obviously, at the public safety, they've been at the new library, they've learned every, uh, operation within that library during the timeframe. Um, you know, they've done minor things at town hall, but again, the, the scope there was so large that it's, it would be like putting a Band-Aid, um, on a broken, or a leg that's been cut off. But, uh, that would, basically gave me the feel.
That's a horrible analogy.
But that gave me the feel for how much, you know, what the effort needs to be, um, when you really do this right. And I think the, I think the point that Bill made, which is, is really, the real sounding board here, is that the schools, um, for years now have had a good plan, and when we did have those cutbacks, that's one of the areas we did cut back in, uh, was our custodial and maintenance staff, back then, it took years to get that back in place, but, um, we also had a downturn in our buildings, it was, it was very obvious, um, just before Michael Leary came on, what the conditions of the schools were, and, and, so that was probably seven, eight years ago, plus, no, 10, probably 10 years ago.
Yeah, he was there.
Um, so right about that time it went down, and now we're starting to, we brought it back up, and, you know, I think the, the effort that really needs to go in is a daily effort, um, to all the buildings. It's not something, and as you can tell when you walk around these buildings, that we're looking at everything every day, uh, so that means you have to have two things that you're really, you're willing to support, uh, and this is sometimes hard, really, in, especially in economic downturns, and that is, maintenance doesn't go away. So you have to be able to keep the budget against maintenance intact. Uh, if you will look at that, it's always the first thing you're going to pull, this is never going to work anyway, doesn't matter how much you put at it, uh, because in those downturn years, the buildings will go, uh, down quickly, uh, and to bring them back costs you a lot more. So that's just, you know, kind of the, the prelude to where we're going with this. What the schools have had, uh, one facilities manager, who is basically responsible for not only the maintenance side of, of the schools from the, you know, the larger scope, but also from the custodial side of it. Um, we're running 540,000 square feet in five buildings, um, he's got a staff of four on the maintenance side, um, three which are truly doing maintenance work within the facilities, one that for the most part, probably 90% of his time is spent, uh, spent on our athletic side, and that is because of all the fields that we manage and all of the inside things, all of the setup and breakdown and all of that on a daily basis, all year round, uh, except for during the summer, and during the summer, he becomes part of our maintenance staff and takes his vacation time then, because it's really the only time he can take it. So really, we're using three right now, 19 custodians throughout the five buildings, um, is a little lower than what the, the normal specs are when you look at square footage, but again, you can, you can tell that they've done a good job within this, within the facilities. Um, you know, floors are cleaned on a regular basis, you know, everything, lights and everything are taken care of on a daily basis. So, you know, we know what the mix basically needs to be based on square footage, and that seems to be working fairly well. Again, if you looked back when this, uh, when the last real recession thing in the 2003 and 4 stage, we lost a few custodians, and it was very apparent within the middle school and the high school especially, which is the highest traffic. You're looking at on the, on the, or what we're looking at on the, um, town side is, obviously, the public safety building, which is about 37,000 square feet, the new Boyd and Library is just under 36,000, Town Hall, as we're projecting, is just under 14,000, um, the, uh, I'm sorry, it'll be 15,500 then, but it's a little under 14 right now, the Council on Aging is about 4,300. Recreation has a number of facilities, obviously, they have the one here on South Street, and then they have a number of, on Mill Street, uh, with the two buildings that they rent and use, um, as well as a number of these small, they call it cottages, but they're, they're really glorified sheds, I guess, still have to be maintained. Uh, Memorial Hall, um, just under 2,000 square feet, so you have about 97,000, and that excludes the DPW and the water department facilities. And the only reason we're excluding those at this point is, for the most part, they do manage their own facilities, get their own staff, they obviously have, you know, people that have those types of skills within them, um, and, you know, in most cases, it's because of the equipment that they're running in and stuff like that, that they would maintain their things easier than what somebody else would come in to maintain.
Would you be including the conservation properties?
Well, there's, we will.
We're gonna, we get down to one pretty soon, so it's gonna be, uh, lot, lot less to maintain, put it that way.
Yeah, I think, you know, Bill and I and Randy have talked about this for a while, there, a couple of the facilities just aren't worth putting money into, so they won't exist. The one that will exist, yes, just like we already have, actually, we did, we did the Spring Street thing, that's how it got rentable again, was that my crew went in and actually did the work it needed to, and DPW helped us out by taking the garage down, so we did a joint project there already as a group, and, and it was very successful, and they're now getting their 18,000 again in rent, which they couldn't get if we didn't do the work. So, uh, yes, that would be also in the group, um, of buildings, but what makes this a little bit more challenging, and as you can see, you have more building facilities in different locations, maybe not the square footage, but it's, it's more spread out. There's actually even a, a, another building that we're kind of drossing with, and because no one really seems to know who has control over it, and that's the Pratt School. Um, and that's also another problem that we're going to need to address, because it's, it's really in, in tough shape, so, um, but, you know, at this point, I'm not even putting on the list, because I don't even know who, who truly has it or-
Bill, just when you're saying, uh, facilities, brick and mortar, but what about the facilities that you need to maintain, the skate park, or the, or the basketball courts and all that stuff, where it's kind of in the middle? It's not a facility, but is that outside of?
That would be outside of what this normal maintenance group would do.
Okay.
Again, if, if you look at a, a standard maintenance group within a town, that's, that's facility oriented, okay, building oriented, that's a talent or a group of, of people. When you look at people that really are doing outside, uh, type of work on, you know, skateboard park, which-
I use that, but there's a whole bunch of little things, like you go up to Pace, and there's a whole bunch of stuff.
Right, right, you know.
But that's, basically, it's outside of what you're talking about.
Yeah, but, you know, could you help on those? Sure, if it was something small.
I was gonna suggest it could be in-house consultant for, for those types of things, so they could, like, we could give direction and pick out people that could help fix those things if needed.
But your tendency wouldn't be to be the overall, to be responsible for those, it would be to, you know, if you needed to hire someone to come in and fix something, that they'd oversee the project, or, you know, like I said, if it was a broken stairway or a door, yes, they could go in and fix that, that wouldn't be the issue. Um, so, you know, again, you're adding about 100,000 square feet to, to this mix, uh, to go forward with. What we're proposing is that in order to do this, and, and this would be following the same model that we, um, the town did with the IT department a few years ago, um, and that basically was to consolidate one position that's at on the town side into the, um, the school side IT department, and basically, um, it was a three-pronged piece to that. The first thing was that there was a small stipend that was given to the, uh, direct tech director to basically oversee not only schools but town, because now he's obviously taking in quite a bit more responsibility there. The second thing was there was a backup to that person kind of put in place with a small stipend as well, because obviously, the person has to go take vacation, um, and now you're getting spread out, you may have to go in two different directions, um, and not always have the one person that could do it by themselves, so it's not logical to think that you should have one. And then the third thing was, we had to, uh, up the staffing on, on the tech side, and we added one additional, um, you know, operations person to basically go out and service and fix, uh, PCs around the, the town, network issues, that whole thing. And that work, that model actually has worked very well for us, uh, over the, over the last, uh, seven years.
Four, five, maybe five, six.
Okay. Um, so I think, I think we know the model works, so what we're saying is basically we'd do the same model. We would, we would basically give the operations manager a little bit of assistance, you know, financially for the amount of work we're asking him to take on. Uh, we would give, you know, him some support as well, and we'd, and at this point, what we're suggesting is that we would hire one more maintenance staff, uh, person. Uh, again, we would look for somebody who has a talent that may not, you know, be in-house currently, so that we'd be able to augment the, the other three that are doing this type of work, um, and get more out of them. What I've also kind of, um, seen since I've been here, and I think Tony Masoli and I share the same thing, is it's nice when you can have two, two-man teams, because a lot of times, you're sending somebody out, and it might be ladder work, it might be, you know, other things that you really want from a safety point of view, uh, picking and lifting things, that type of thing. You don't want it to be someone going out who just thinks he's got to do the job and, and ends up, you know, uh, out on workers' comp. So, uh, you know, my thing would be decree, two, two-man teams that basically could go out and, and hit things. You know, right now, I have one two-man team and one one-man team, basically, that, that are trying to do this as well, so, um, and I think that you can get a lot more done, quite honestly, quicker, uh, when you do it, if you do it right. The other part of this, which would, is a little different than the IT side, um, but because we had something in-house already on the IT side, uh, is basically to create, uh, or go out and, and purchase a school dude, uh, or a similar software package to that. The name is misleading, what it really is, is a, is a work order processing system, which anybody from any building could get onto and say that, you know, I'm, I'm here at Council on Aging, I have a electrical plug that's not working in the director's office, or I have three lights that are off in cafeteria, I have a sink that's leaking over at town hall, I have blah, blah, blah. They all come in automatically to the operations manager, who basically can then assign them out, and it's a whole tracking system. So the, the beauty of this type of system, and we would definitely have to do this now with this many facilities, I mean, I, we can do what we're doing with five buildings, because it's a lot easier, I'm getting five phone calls, and, you know, not, it's not getting much worse than that. Uh, but when you get to this level and, and the amount of people that would be involved, this also gives you the ability to track things. So now you see that the boiler's constantly going out in a building, or there's constantly a problem with something at one building, and, and the track record it creates for you pretty quickly says, okay, we've got to address this on a grander scale to get rid of that item, to make sure it doesn't just keep coming back to us and costing us money, because obviously, every time we send somebody out to do work, uh, you know, that's a dollar factor to us. So, um, so we would recommend doing that. Now, I'm actually, I just finished getting quotes on it and stuff, and I'm going to try one more time to go through MIA, um, as part of their rebate or, or-
Rent program.
Yeah, uh, that basically, they may fund the, the first year purchase of it, um, which is, uh, right about, uh-
Ten thousand dollars, something like that?
Well, the quote I got for Foxborough would be, the, what we'd need MIA to pay basically would be about $4,000. Um, and then we would have an annual recurring cost, it's pretty close to that, going down the road, probably about $3,500. But again, I think that's, that really is what makes you efficient, and, and really will, you know, keep this program moving faster, um, and not losing time on it.
Bill, question, these are, obviously, the town side and the school side, the allocations are going to be attributed to each operation, but these folks are going to be housed and paid from where?
We, we, basically, the way we did, uh, the IT side, the same way we would do this, is the staff is actually hired in part of the Fox, the, uh, high school, or the, the school department staffing, but what we do is we journal entry through to the town budget, the allocated cost-
Right.
-to cover it. So we have total control in, as far as that goes, but the allocation, really, and how this goes out, is really based on priority.
But their paycheck will say Foxborough Public Schools?
No, it's Town of Foxborough.
Oh, Town of Foxborough, okay.
All of ours, say, Tom.
Fair enough, okay. But they'll, they'll have to be headquartered, uh, in the, in the schools?
Well, they'll, they'll have a, a landing spot in the schools, because we, we have that space, and we really don't have it on the town side, and we're not going to go build it, so.
On the, um, on this school dude, or whatever type of, uh, software, it's, it's real important that you do, that you use it and it's interface with an asset management tool, so you can identify expected useful life, remaining useful life, and anytime a replacement is done, or a major component that'll extend remaining useful life. If that can interface with it, it's going to save a ton of time down the future, especially if you can work this into a, a five-year capital needs, uh, on building systems, um, where you're starting off basically from, from scratch, now's the time to implement that, rather than playing catch-up with a system that you already had in place. Real important.
Yeah, this, this has a number of modules, one of the modules that I'm recommending we purchase upfront is called PM Direct, and PM Direct, obviously, is preventive maintenance direct, but in order to have that, you have to build, um, all of your equipment requirements throughout the district, which is in itself very time-consuming, because you have to go through every building and, and, and recognize every air handler, every heating system, every, you know, major component that way. But again, to your point, then you, what you've done is you've gone through and who's the manufacturer, what's the, you know, what was the date of purchase, what's the model number, what's everything? So when something goes wrong with it, you also have all that information right in front of you, you're not going back out to the field to find it.
Then you can build in the preventive maintenance based on manufacturer's recommendations.
Exactly.
And then you can tie that into warranties for, for new buildings or-
Right, exactly.
Buildings that were built recently, you can follow up on the warranties.
Correct. So I think it's, I think it's a crucial package part in order to make this whole thing work anyway.
Just, you don't have to go back, but in the facilities list, was the public safety building and the library part of that, or is that separate?
Yeah.
That's part of it. And, and the staff, like the janitorial staff, that's separate for that?
That's separate, we'll, we'll, we can talk about that, um, at the end. The, um, from a, from a budgeting point of view, and Randy and, and Bill and I, and even Debbie was, uh, in the last meeting, and we talked about this, there's, for a lot of reasons. Obviously, I have to do my reporting to the state on school expenses, um, which are very separate from what, what Randy does. Actually, Randy supports some of mine by giving me the numbers that the town side is actually doing, uh, on our behalf, that I have to include, but because of the way the doing on our behalf that I have to include, but because of the way the state laws are written, our numbers are very different. There's certain things, E-rate, I get, you don't get, so we have to keep our financial very separate in this whole process, and it's the only really way that this thing will work, very similar to what we're doing with IT. So again, no difference there. What we're saying is, from the payroll side of it, if you will, there would be the three pieces that we talked about in stipends and the maintenance staff. In the actual repair maintenance supply lines, there would be a mirrored budget on the town side as to what there is on the school side, not dollar-wise, but mirrored as far as types of lines. So contracted services, as an example, you all know, we go out to bid once a year for our electrical services, our elevator services, plumbing services, all of that. We do that once, once a year to have that, but, so obviously, when I'm calling in for a major heating thing, I have a vendor I can always already go to, because we've done it through the bid process, but I have a line item that I can charge within the school budget. Similarly, we'd have one on the town side. Now, if it's a matter of one of my guys going to replace a belt, replace a motor, that's one thing, but when you get into the bigger things, you're not going to have that level of staff onboard, nor do you want to pay to have that level of staff sitting there all day, because that really does not cost effective, unless you're just, your buildings are 100 years old and you're constantly repairing them. And thank God the town has really supported, you know, upgrading our facilities to good facilities that are easy to maintain. So we would have, you know, Randy would have to build that budget, and part of that would be also a consolidation. We don't have on the school side a budget by school building for, you know, gas or utilities. We don't have one by school, even though we track everything. That way, we know obviously where the costs are. But if I'm doing, as the same example, contracted services, we have a single contracted services line. Depending on where the needs are in the district during the year is where that money is spent. So one year it may be very heavy at the Taylor School, because we ran into a huge boiler problem. We have to address it. We just had one at the Borough where we lost a hot water system. Probably in the end it'll cost us almost $10,000. Well, if I had only allocated X amount of dollars to Borough and X amount to Taylor and X amount, I would not be able to handle it that way. So we lump it all in, and then we basically deal with the issues as they come and kind of prioritize from there, and when we get closer to the end of the year, and if we're fortunate enough to have some money, then we do a little bit more preventive maintenance to make sure that we don't have some of these issues coming at us. Same situation Randy and I have talked about would be on the town side, and I think that makes it easier. So again, you might run into something at the, at the public safety building this year. You might run into something at Town Hall next year. You might run into something, you know, that are a little bit larger items than you normally would do, but you have the flexibility to work. Leaving it out into the individual budgets, everybody thinks they have something to grab that really isn't what that's supposed to be for. It's supposed to be for maintaining these facilities. And again, we would remain, everything would remain separate.
Quick comment on that?
Sure.
So the intent this year, consistent with what Bill just said, is we already have a departmental budget, 192 municipal building. It's the Town Hall building budget. We also have the joint public safety building budget. So for starters, what we're intending to do is put those two together and then take all of the other items that are listed here, electric, natural gas, contracted services, et cetera, from all of the other municipal budgets, and extract them and put them into this same budget. So we'd have the same, same model. So that'll be a change this year for our budgeting, but, you know, we'll work closely with the department heads to make sure that we bisect these lines that need to be, you know, looked into, because maybe the contracted services isn't just about the building, et cetera, but, you know.
Which is where it should be anyways. I mean, my opinion is that we hire department heads to run operations. We don't have them to run the buildings. I mean, they really shouldn't be in that business, because none of them are experts. We need to have people that really understand those costs, and so that, so we can actually be flexible in those , in that spending as well, where if one building may be off a little bit, we'll be able to pick that up. You know, it's just, it's the way it typically runs.
Sounds like an insurance pool.
And I think the schools, obviously, realized that years ago. They weren't going to put their principals in charge of dealing with building maintenance. That's not their job. So, you know, I think that's why the program is so successful on the school side. It was basically to take it away from the people who don't, you know, really understand the issues around that and are busy doing something else, and give it to somebody that that's their job to deal with. And it does work, in fact.
And just one, one other point that I wanted to make, follow up with Jim's point, was that we actually structured it the same way, I think it was Johnny, you asked this question. We structured it the same exact way in that, where we're structured under the school department, and because they already had a lot of the folks already in place. We just needed to enhance it a little bit, which is exactly what we did. And I will tell you, the true test of that was, one day I was sitting in my office and the, and my radiator, my, my heating system failed in my office. Picked up the phone, called the director of facilities. He says, "I'll be there in 10 minutes." Guy was there in 10 minutes, fixed it. My day was, my day was saved. Instead of me calling around to a plumber and to a heating expert to get in there and try and fix it, it was taken care of within, within an hour.
And I think it's very, it's actually worked already, as I said, on the smaller scale that we've tried, just to get a feel for how this would work. Again, we have all those contracts already in place. We have all these vendors we're already using. And I'll be honest with you, we were very fortunate with getting Tony Masali. His, his, you know, pocketful of vendors, as I'd like to look at it, is just incredible. Some of the guys he's pulled out of there, and the pricing that they've given us to do excellent work, you know, is good, but now it's like you would leverage that same group of vendors when we need to do something. And again, it's not somebody trying to find them or figure it out. It's somebody who's already dealing with them on the other 540,000.
And I think it's safe to say the town side departments already have a relationship with Tony, because he is going over there to do all the stuff right now, and I think to Bill's earlier point, this is going to more formalize an informal arrangement that we've had that actually has worked quite well and that we all support, but it does formalize it instead of just leaving it to everyone's goodwill.
So, I mean, as far as the joint maintenance side, that's, that's basically the whole concept. It's, you know, very simple. The, the second piece, which really isn't part of the maintenance budget itself, is part of the custodial issue, which is a little bit broader scope question, and that is because all of your buildings are handling differently. So for us, very simple, we've got 19 staff members that are out doing, you know, 540,000 square feet. They all have set duties. They know exactly what they're doing, and we know exactly what they're supposed to be doing. So, on your side, you've got, in one instance, you have somebody who's outsourcing it. Another instance, you have somebody that's inside. Someplace you have someone that's temporary, you know, you, or, I mean, part-time. So you've got like a-
Hodgepodge.
A hodgepodge of solutions to a problem, which may not be your best thing. You also have the same problem we have, and that is during snowstorms, you need to have sidewalks that are clear and safe. So having staff onboard for us is extremely important. Now, the reason our model works is our staff knows under the contract that during a snowstorm, they're called in at the time of the snowstorm, so not when their shift comes, because obviously, you know, I'd only be able to have snow at night, which most of my custodians are around. You know, it would be damaging. So that works very well for us, because it gives us a pool of people, and you can tell after you come in overnight, the next morning, all of our sidewalks are clear. Everything is done. DPW, they've worked in correlation with DPW, so with the plowing and everything has been done at the same time. It works very well. The, you really have that same exact issue. You've got public buildings that need to be open, and when you go to outside sources like one has done, having someone to come in and actually shovel the sidewalk or move snow is not going to be as easy. So I, I think what, you know, we've talked about, and this is one thing that we haven't gotten far enough to really understand, I think if it ends up being in-house, which would be my suggestion, that, you know, again, the operations manager would be the one who would be over that as far as the management and hiring of staff, and also keeping them involved with the training side. But it would be a totally different group than, than my custodians, just like the maintenance, not like the maintenance. The maintenance is going to be one group. This would be two different groups, because they have to go between buildings. So you basically want to create some sort of a team process, maybe a two- or three-person unit that basically has a van and vehicles that can move around, and they could go from building to building to building and deal with it. And that could give you a very clean approach, where right now, they're all just trying to muddle through and get through a process. The, the other side of having a custodial staff that way, again, is you'd have those three when you need them to go around and do sidewalks as well as a group. I don't know if it's three. I don't know if it's two. I don't know if it's four. I don't know what the amount the town side is paying yet. We need to kind of pull all that in, and then you need to get buy-in, because now you've got the library trustees who have certain say over their buildings and things like that. So you're going to have to, there's going to have to be a little bit of talk here. I'm going to say, go out on a limb here, I think that the library trustees will buy into the maintenance thing, because they've already, we've been doing it for them already for a year, and I think they need it. Jerry's going to be the first one to tell you he doesn't like it. He loves to be able to play and look at the, the heating thing on a computer, but when it goes bad, it goes bad, and he doesn't want to be with it. So.
Tony gets the first phone call.
So I think the, so I think from that perspective, they'll have no problem with the maintenance side, but the custodial side, again, another whole scope thing that we have to figure out, how to pull it in and what the best solution. Maybe the best solution is to go outside for all those buildings. I don't personally feel that, but I don't see the number, so I don't know.
I mean, the first step, and this will obviously evolve as we socialize this with the department heads, is to, just like with maintenance, pull all the maintenance expenses into this, you know, one department, is to pull all the custodial staffing dollars and also put those into the, to the same budget as well. That's not changing-
Right.
-how the service is delivered, but at least it then aggregates all the dollars that are available, and it makes decision-making a little easier.
What's really important, too, in this discussion, is that right now, there are individual custodians showing up, doing their work, but they're not getting, receiving any consistent direction or program.
Not getting support, not getting any training?
That's right. And none of those things are happening right now. So, I mean, typically, one of the things you do is a scheduled, schedule stripping the floors and waxing them on a periodic basis, wax, taking care of, you know, certain maintenance of the boilers. All those things would be taken care of on a regular scheduled basis. Right now, we're not seeing any of that. So those are things that, that'll be huge benefits to having it set up this way.
So Bill, that model, custodians could be pooled and then allocated to a building. If there was a special project to, you know, clean up a building, you, rather than just one custodian, you could put three there for a week.
Exactly.
Well, the reason that model works is it is, if you think about it, it's the public version of a private business, which is exactly what, if you outsource a thing, it's exactly what they do. I have a very good friend that, that runs a very large outsourcing thing. He's been doing a lot of communities, but the biggest problem that those communities are facing is that when they're, the three people come in and do the building, and they're done in two hours and out, and now you have a problem, they're out.
Taking it back.
So, and he's the first one to admit that, but a lot of communities think that they're saving money on it, and yes, they are to a degree. I think this goes back to that whole cost concept thing. If you're looking for the cheapest dollars, that's the potential way to do it. If you're looking for a reasonable thing where you can control the entire environment and make sure everything stays to a certain point, then that doesn't always work for you when you're outsourcing. And I think that's, you know, we're all familiar with outsourcing in a million different ways, whether it's the phone call you take from, from another country or whatever. It doesn't always do the thing that you want it to do best, and I think so. Again, once we know what the costs are and we know what the programs you want to be, and I think Bill is putting the perfect point on it, we strip our floors twice a year. You know, the major one is during the summertime, where obviously we go through these buildings all the way down and re-code them all the way back up, but we'll also do it again during the wintertime, the school breaks, try to again get some more wax on these floors and clean. You do that, these floors can last forever. You don't do that, and you get what we've had in some of the older buildings on the town side. And it's very important you do it right. We have, we have our suppliers come in and train our, our staff. We have meetings for that, that they'll come in and they'll show them how to do the different stripping techniques, the different equipment we can buy for them to use, do it right. The lifting things, we obviously bring MIA in to do, you know, safety stuff, because one of the biggest issues that you face with this level of staffing is backs and, you know, strains and pulls and stuff like that. So you have to teach them. You have to do that regularly. So we do do that, and I think, again, whoever was in on the town side would just be included in those type of programs to make sure that we kept everybody up to the same level, and, and obviously, we're successful with the program.
That's it?
That's great.
Thank you.
This just makes so much sense.
Well, and it's, it's what the taxpayers have been asking for a long time, and I have to be honest with you. I think they're right. This has, this has been-
So AdCom talked about this 20-something years ago.
Oh, yeah.
So for all the AdComs that have brought it up, here it is.
Right on time. Terrific. Bill, thank you. Both Bills.
Well, my thanks to Bill for taking the lead on this.
My thanks to the school committee for being receptive to the centralized concepts. It's really working on IT. It's already starting work in maintenance, hopefully in this other area, and it's, it's obviously incredibly efficient for the department heads that are trying to manage these buildings, and it's in the best interest of the tax, for the taxpayers, Bill says.
So you didn't need the selectmen to consider any action tonight, just take this under advisement?
No, this would be, well, I guess the thing that, I'm not sure of the process, but I think it, that both boards would. We never did a formal agreement under the IT side. It's worked well. I'm not sure that we need a quote-quote formal written agreement.
No, but if there's consensus agreement, then we would adjust our budget, our preliminary budgets accordingly, so we need a sense of direction.
I think the purpose of this was to, was to lay it out there-
Educate.
-before, before we prepare the budgets.
Right.
Because it will be a focal point of the budget discussion, and that we just want to, want to make sure that before there were, if there were, if we're missing something along the way, you know, speak now, you know, and let us know, because it's, we're planning accordingly.
So how, how does this go back into the, if you look at the CIP budget that was up there? So all of a sudden, now we're starting to evaluate all the different buildings, and you look at roofs and MEP systems.
Yep.
That whole thought process has to shake down the CIP in a different manner now.
Yep.
So if the CIP is voting on this in May, is there an opportunity to get this done well before that, to adjust the CIP thought process? Because if you look at the CIP, you've got Roger Hill, you've got, you know, the, both of you, as I think, Ginny. If we're just looking at a, if they're just looking at a sheet and there's no thought process into the sheet, do we put that CIP off? Because a lot of the stuff that you talked about of, like the IT, a lot of that stuff, and Debbie, you were in that meeting too.
Yeah, but I think one of the CIP proposals come directly from the departments, the project they're proposing, really come directly from the, from the departments. This is really how to maximize the efficiency of your everyday preventive maintenance and problem-solving, troubleshooting maintenance.
Correct, but that's what shows, that's what the CIP is all about, right? The budget items are those maintenance items.
I can address that, because I, because I know that, I would say that probably your fiscal '17 budget will be, will be more reflective of that approach, because '16, we need to put the program in place first, and then we need to have, go through an evaluation of all our facilities. And, I mean, obviously, Town Hall's a different issue. We're going to deal with that hopefully on the 17th, but, but I think this, the next, the '17 budget should start to reflect things such as schedules on roofs, schedules on building, on boilers, schedules on parking lots, things that, all the things that are major pieces of a building that should be scheduled, so we know when they're coming out. So you'll start, see some pieces in '17, you'll see more in '18, '19, '20, et cetera. But, you know, when you start, when the programs, I just, the first two years I saw this program evolve, it was amazing. The report came out, where the facilities director made a report to both boards, saying, "These are things we addressed during the past year. These are things we're going to address in the upcoming years." And sort of everybody was, had confidence that those things were being addressed, so we ended up with major, major capital expenditures on buildings, when we could have maintained them if we, if we'd done right along.
And that's, because a lot of this stuff is in the operating budget, which is not CIP, but the-
Exactly.
The fruition of it comes out of the CIP.
Is that the right?
And I think to Dave's point, if you do adopt a program or a system that basically can start to categorize everything. About five years ago, the school department had a group come in and actually do an assessment on all five buildings, and that's really what we've been using as our roadmap for where are we going. That's why the Borough has been our top priority. The Borough and Taylor, basically, were done and built at similar times. Actually, Taylor's slightly younger than, or slightly older, I mean, than the Borough is, but the condition of the Borough from the, the way it was built and the, the equipment stuff is slightly worse than Taylor's. So we've been using that as our priority in our map, as to how we're moving forward, and everything's been kind of sitting in that. But when you come in and you do this analysis, to Dave's point, we'll know the age of every roof that's out there. We'll have the age of every piece of equipment that's out there. We'll have, you know, actually, on the school side, I have this. I've gone back about 12 years, and I've taken every major project that we've done on any single building, and I've got them, who did them, when they were done, what the cost was, and stuff like that, because that starts to put into a priority. You'll know when pavement's going to start to go. You know when, you know, other issues are going to start to show up. And we would do the same thing, obviously, for the whole town side. So now you're really looking at a master program for all buildings and all needs within those buildings. So to your point on the CIP thing, yes, we might do a consolidated thing where we want to come in and do three roofs, because we can bid them all at the same time, get a better price on doing it, and we know they're all in the same relative timeframe that they need to be done. We might be looking at, we know we only have one parking lot issue in the next couple of years. It's a big dollar one, but we're going to get it out on CIP. We, we do everything on a three-to-five-year thing on CIP as it is, so being able to schedule that stuff out would give everybody a lot more confidence in the fact that you're looking at these projects as you're moving forward. So I think this, this is the starting point to that, but I agree wholeheartedly. This year one, or FY '16, you're, you're just not going to have the base built yet to really know it. I mean, we'll do what we have to, obviously, to fix the issues and try to highlight some for CIP this year, but.
But I will tell you that by, by the time we have this conversation next year, you'll already see a marked difference.
Right.
You absolutely, well, it's, the response is almost immediate in terms of how it happens.
So who has the authority to begin this process? Is it up to the town?
I was going to try to start through the, through the budget process.
Lorraine, anything else? Selectmen, anything else?
I know, I believe we have consensus to support the program. It's, you know, a great approach, and congratulations, really.
Ted's nodding on this end as well. Well, I want to, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for coming in again, especially on a Monday night, and I just want to make the comment that, once again, I feel fortunate to be a citizen and a taxpayer in Foxborough. You, our municipal leaders and our school leaders make it easy to be an elected official, and we appreciate your support. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice to see everybody. Do you want to adjourn, and then we'll adjourn? Is that the?
Just to remind everyone, tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we're going to be back